Roll call, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Do we have any additions to the agenda as presented?
Need to add item nine, Consider Resolution R 120406 Authorizing the Submission of an Application to TDOT for Local Interstate Connecting LIC Route Program by the County of Putnam. Sponsors: Melinda Kiefer.
Okay, we need to add that. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All right. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on April 5th, 2012. Have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to new business. Item three, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider on First Reading Ordinance 120302, Rezoning 610 and 626 North Peachtree Avenue from MS Medical Services to UNV University. Sponsors: Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, we're having a little equipment problem. Kathy, you can go to the next one for me. Mister, and I'm going to do the best I can on these names, Bichet Kira Jerome and Mister Rugges Pon Caratus Arrogue have submitted a request to rezonate their properties from MS Medical Service to UNV University. These properties are located at 610 and 626 North Peachtree. As you can, can you go to the next one for me? And here's the general location of the properties up just south of 7th along Peachtree. Could you go to the next one, please? As you can see, these properties are contiguous with the UNV zoning to the north and east and with MS zoning to the south and west. Parcel 20 is the larger parcel there. It's a through track that has frontage on both North Peachtree and North Cedar Avenues. And Parcel 19 is a corner lot with frontage on North Peachtree and West 6th Street. Combined, these two tracks consist of approximately nine tenths of an acre excluding Radaway. In the rezoning application that was submitted with the request, the indicated purpose for the rezoning was for the construction of a restaurant with a drive-through facility. Restaurants are allowed in the MS district, but the provision of a drive-through facility is prohibited. So the difference here would be to allow a restaurant with a drive-through versus a restaurant without one. And restaurants with drive-throughs are allowed in the university's district. As most of y'all know, or as all of y'all know, the MS district was created for the primary purpose of providing a centralized contiguous location for hospitals, medical-related facilities, and complementary uses, and to protect these uses from non-compatible uses. Of course, restaurants are considered a compatible use. But we did contact officials with the medical center to determine what their opinion was on this, and they're not opposed or neutral on the rezoning. The request was approved by the planning commission and the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions from the council?
Mr. Mills, just thank you, Mr. Mayor. The two houses on the property just adjacent to the change in zoning, is that owned by the hospital? Are those owned by the hospital? They're not?
Aren't they office buildings?
The properties that are on there now?
Right, yeah.
One's a duplex on the property on the corner of 6th, and Peachtree's a duplex and the other's just is an older home.
A duplex and a mobile home?
Just an older home.
Older home, okay, thank you.
An older house.
Now, have you had any complaints, concerns?
No, we had no opposition at planning commission.
Okay.
And we've had no calls since then.
Okay, good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions from the council? Questions, comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item four, Consider Reappointment to the Cookville Historic Zoning Commission. Sponsors: Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the current term of Ms. Julia Woodford on the Historic Zoning Commission has expired. Ms. Woodford serves as our representative of a local patriotic organization. Members of the Historic Zoning Commission serve five-year terms and are appointed by the mayor with confirmation by a majority vote of the city council. Ms. Woodford has been contacted and has agreed to continue to serve. She's a very valuable member, and we'd recommend for her reappointment.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments from council?
Mrs. Woodford has been a very diligent member of this board and the commission, and I'm proud to say I recommended her for the first term, so I'm glad she's willing to go for a second term.
Yeah, she's been on the board before I thought about running for city office.
Oh, yeah.
It's great that we have people step forward. I'm very proud of my wife and any of the citizens that step forward and do voluntary work on these committees. It's very good.
Councilman Woodford, I was going to say, you better say something nice.
You better vote for it.
Yeah. You know, I appreciate her putting in her time. Anybody that volunteers their time for their community, I think is doing a good thing, so. All right. Any other comments?
I'm ready to vote.
All right, I'll vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mills. All right, item five, Consider Approval of Property Swap for the Cookville Regional Medical Center. Sponsors: CRMC, Mr. Paul Corff.
Thank you, Mayor and council. CRMC, Cookville Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, is requesting your approval and consideration of a land swap between the medical center and the Tennessee Delta Housing Corporation, which is referred to as the SAE House. The property, we would like to swap our properties that we currently own on 423 and 433 Peachtree, along with 428 North Walnut. And in consideration and swapping would be for their piece of property, which is located on 158 West 7th Street. And as you can see on the map, the property on 7th Street that they own is adjacent to property that we currently own, and it's kind of the front entrance into the medical center, off of 7th Street into Medical Center Boulevard. The property that we would swap, they would, has recently, by the council, been zoned for university, so they could build a new fraternity house. And the SAE would continue to occupy the current location until December 31st of 2013. This gives them the proper time to raise the funds that they need to build a new facility along with building that facility and then moving their people into that new facility located on the property that we want to swap. Be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Corff. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
Just a quick question. Looks like, actually, just kind of, we reviewed this in the work session, we've known about this for a while, but it looks, I just, first time I looked at this, is that the property being swapped is actually, looks like they're getting a bigger piece of property and a corner lot, actually two corners.
They do get, it is a larger piece of property. The square footage is about 24,000 square feet of property, and where their location is, about 15,000 square feet of property. But when you, when I run the numbers on what we paid for that piece of property and what we recently paid for property on 7th Street, this is still a good deal for the medical center. It gives us, gives us some additional parking that can be used on the medical center. And if anybody's been to the medical center lately, parking is a big issue. And this is much closer to the medical center than the properties that we own on Peachtree, and it would tie into a property into a parking lot that we just finished and opened about two months ago. So being adjacent to that makes it very attractive for us to want to do this.
It sounds like a win-win for both parties.
It is a good, it is good. It gets the SAE House a new location.
Great location.
Closer to the university fraternity road, and it's something that both us and the fraternity, I think, come out, come out on the good side of that.
I think it benefits SAE probably more than it does the hospital, getting them closer to the other fraternities.
Do they have a timeline as far as how long they will stay in the property now until they start building?
Yes, they do. They plan on being done with their fundraising and construction by December 31st, 2013. So about 18 months.
Okay. I guess that's a great question, because one of the things that I've been hearing, I didn't, I never realized how busy a street, I mean, I work at the hospital, okay? And I spend most of my time there, unfortunately, but...
You come in early, so it's not as busy.
You know, that 7th Street is a busy road, and now that we've, now that the city has begun construction on that and developing that road, and any development along there has really had an impact for, I don't know how many people have come up to me and expressed, when are you going to get that road done, and et cetera. So having a timeline, I think, is important, and I appreciate the SAE. I'll appreciate it even more when they, as long as they stick with that, we can get that road and those properties taken care of.
Right, that's going to be in the actual closing documents, that they vacate that property by December 31st, 2013.
So that they do have to vacate it, whether they've built a house or not?
Yes.
Okay.
That's good.
Know how some of these fundraisers don't always go as planned.
They might go to potluck there.
And for anybody else looking at the, at this screen, that's an old photo, right, Mr. Corff, because of the corner on Medical Center Boulevard and 7th?
It's gone.
That building is gone now.
That complex is gone, there's parking.
So basically, we would own from that corner in all the way out to Medical Center Boulevard, so it wouldn't be chopped up like it would look.
It is not chopped up. It would be, it is contiguous adjacent property. The SAE House now sits right adjacent to what we own on, on the corner of Medical Center Boulevard and 7th Street.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that.
It is.
Colleen Childers used to live right here.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Good to go.
Anything from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Corff.
Thank you, Mr. Corff.
All right, item six, Consider Approval of Payment for Professional Services Fee, Wastewater Treatment Plant Permit, Public Works MS4 Storm Water Permit. Sponsors: Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we're here presenting a request for final payment on a invoice for professional service that we incurred regarding some permit fees that are permit issues at our wastewater treatment plant. It also included the MS4 permit that Public Works regulates. In August of 2011, we entered into a letter of engagement with Hall &amp; Associates to provide our department with guidance on permit issues at our wastewater treatment plant and to provide guidance to the Public Works Department on issues concerning their MS4 stormwater permit. The terms of the agreement were capped at an ought-to-exceed $10,000 fee. We've have a, been invoiced a final invoice that's going to exceed that $10,000. It is the final payment, and I would ask your approval to pay that final invoice. It's $2,089.83.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from council?
Mr. Kelly, is this a firm that you have used before? You're familiar with them?
Yes, well, we've, I've communicated with them over the years since 2000. TMLs, they were part of a suit with TML that TML represented with them, and so we've been familiar with them over the years. I can't remember, I know I've talked to the people a lot, I just can't remember if we've ever engaged them formally. This may be the first time.
Okay.
All right, any other comments, questions?
No.
Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item seven, Consider Authorizing City Manager to Execute an Engineering Contract for the Hydraulic Sewer Model Development. Sponsors: Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm seeking council authorization for the city manager to enter into an engineering contract with Gretchen Smith and Partners to provide a consulting engineering services necessary to develop a hydraulic sewer model for our department. The model will be used as a tool to formulate a capital improvement plan to identify and eliminate some pinch points and bottlenecks in the sewer system that could contribute to sanitary sewer overflows in the future, and to help us figure out what we're going to need to spend capital on when future development happens within the system. We've negotiated an ought-to-exceed fee of $114,408. This fee is broken down, I think I've got it up on the board, it's broken down, the engineering portion of that fee is $69,488. Flow monitoring fee is a big component of that total fee. It's $43,720. There are some reimbursable expenses of $1,200. The objectives that we're trying to get to will give us basically assessment of the hydraulic characteristics and the capacity of the sewer lines using temporary flow monitor and so forth. Kathy, if you'll flip to the next slide, next slide. At the bottom, at the bottom of the map there is wastewater plant, and these are our big lines coming back into town, the arteries of the system, pretty much. And we're going to place some flow monitors around each, some of those critical branches and sort of measure baseline flows, storm flows, diurnal flows, and try to get all of that, and then we're going to build a model. They're going to help us do that with, incorporate a lot of the data we've already gathered with our GIS databases, and develop a model in the future. And what, we'll do a next, a next phase of this later, after all this is developed. What our intent will be is to try to determine if and when we need to put some equalization basins in up in the system, where those would be strategically placed, and where's the best place to put those, maybe identify some property now. And it will help us if we're going to have some growth and all good wants to come in and wants to request extra capacity, we can run a model and, you know, we may run down so far and say, well, it's going to, you're going to overload a section of pipe halfway down the system, so that's going to have to be dealt with. And so that's what it's going to help us do. And so that's what we're here asking, seeking approval to enter into that contract. One thing I want to show you, Kathy, flip to the next slide.
The next one.
Yes, I think that's the next. This is one of the things that prompted us, we've been looking at it probably a year and a half. I think 2011 was this, total rainfall for the year was the highest, second highest rainfall we've had in 30-year period. And what it sort of showed us, this is a, sort of a hydrograph at the wastewater plant. You'll see some baseline flows here, you have a big storm event, and you see how the flows pick up during these storm events. Groundwater gets in, that's, that's some of the things we're always working on, trying to fix with some of these rehab projects. But over the years, with this last yearly 30-year sort of flow, we started seeing this peak get higher and higher. And at some point, that peak gets up to a point where you can't handle that flow. And so if that happens, it starts running out of manholes down by the creek, and you can't let that happen. So what we're looking at, okay, so you've got, we can force so much through the plant, but if this continues up, at some point, we may have to take that peak at the top, transfer it into a basin, and then let it come back in slowly after the peak's down. And so that's what we're going to be looking at long-term and trying to look at, okay, where will we place some of these top structures? If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
I do. Do we have a motion for approval?
No.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All right.
I've got a couple of questions. I like the science behind this. Ronnie, a couple of questions that, the graph that you have with progression of time, I've noticed the endpoint that you, the endpoint on your graph, is that current, is that current, like 2012 right now?
I don't know. This was, we were gathering some data for something, and I just grabbed it, sort of give you an example, this was probably in 2011. Well, the storm event has 1-5-07.
The storm event was 2007, I guess. I'm just, the reason I'm asking the question is, is because if that line of regression is, if it's, if its fall rate is basically right there, we're nowhere near where it was previous to that, to that 100-year event. It's like that, it hasn't fell back, the line has not fell back down to pre-2007 elevens. 2007 levels, so that's a...
Yeah, but this may be, Larry, the timeframe here may be one day or something.
Oh, so it's not, it's not the scale?
Yeah, this is not years. No, yeah, it's probably like a 24-hour period.
I guess the question, I guess maybe that leads to the question, the question I'm asking is, is that currently, I mean, are we, are we back to that line, that line basically where we were prior, prior to?
Yes, what happens during the rain events, you're running along normal baseline flows.
Right.
And you'll get a big storm event like this one, this is a, some storm event we picked out. And you'll see the flows just pick up, and then they'll progress right back down over a 24, 36-hour period, back down to semi-base flow. It depends on how high the groundwater table gets. Wintertime, this baseline flow may be a little bit higher because the groundwater table's up.
Right.
And there is water getting in all the time anyway, yeah.
So you're saying some of the rain events we had in 2011 almost exceeded the capability of...
Yes, you're getting, you're pushing that level. So when we saw it, but it's, it was the second highest in 30 years, so it's sort of a unique total yearly event, but you had the water table up, so any big rain event, you were sort of getting those peaks and saw a couple of peaks that sort of thought, you know, we need to start looking at this, even though, you know, we're still working and trying to fix leaks and all that, but over time, and we add more customers and everything, that peak's going to sneak up and sneak up. And so we need to look at that and start planning where we would put a basin in if we needed to do that.
Yes, sir. So let me, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong with the statement, but you've used a lot of really cool terms, like hydraulics and pinch points and et cetera. But the way, way I'm hearing it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that this, this significant chunk of change that this council's going to approve is to, is to abate or hinder or diminish the chance of excessive flooding points to basically protect, to control our flow, control water flows better and to protect, protect our citizens? Is it safe to say that that's part of this?
It's going to be used, for us to use it as a planning document, a tool, to look at future growth and look at placing a basin. We're in that basin and running that model. If we place it here, how does the model run? Where's it going to have, give us the best bang for our buck?
Right.
And what we're trying to prevent is getting too much flow at that plant that we can't handle and it runs into Pigeon Roost Creek.
Okay.
And this is a budgeted item. We budgeted this year. We're just now getting it to you.
Good, okay, thank you, that answered my question.
I have a comment, though.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say that I appreciate you being proactive and thinking about this now and not after the fact. It's always best, and I find that most of the department heads here do that, so it's appreciated.
And it's usually cheaper on the front end, too.
Yes, it is.
All right, any other questions? Comments, questions from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Thank you.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item eight, Consider Approval of New Lease Agreement for Three Motorcycles. Sponsors: The Police Department Chief Bob Terry.
I don't have any cool words for grabs either ones, I just wing them. We're here tonight seeking approval for at least three motorcycles where the lease has expired. It's the same price it was the last time, and it's due to be renewed. Will be two brand-new motorcycles, or I'm sorry, three.
Three, okay.
You don't have cool terms, but you have motorcycles, and that's cooler than wastewater.
They carry guns, too.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Terry. All right. Item nine, Consider Resolution R 120406 Authorizing the Submission of an Application to TDOT for Local Interstate Connecting LIC Route Program by the County of Putnam. Sponsors: Melinda Kiefer.
Mayor and council, Kathy, you'll have to hit that button, thank you, hit that through. The resolution before you is to mirror and in support of the resolution that Putnam County passed Monday night in relation to the TDOT Local Interstate Connector Funds. This grant program is a 50-50 match. We will be able to make application at each end of the Bennett Road Extension for a total of $4 million, which we, the city of Cookville, will match with $4 million. The schedule that must be followed with the Bennett Road Extension is that the progress on Bennett Road Extension Plan, et cetera, is very similar to the progress made at the Fifth Interchange. In the federal highway's eyes and in TDOT's eyes, mainly federal highway administration, these are one and the same project, Fifth Interchange and the road that would connect the Fifth Interchange to another state highway. Just to refresh your memory, the southern connection from the Fifth Interchange does go through our business park and connect to Highway 135, which is Willow Avenue. Kathy?
Thank you.
Currently, the corridor of the Bennett Road Extension lies in the county's jurisdiction. The county passed a resolution to apply for the grant program. The resolution in front of you states that they will go into contract, but that their responsibility to that contract would expire upon the successful annexation by the city of Cookville. City of Cookville would agree to pay all non-TDOT funding for the project, and we will assume all responsibility for the development, construction, and maintenance of the Bennett Road Extension. The city of Cookville is in full support of the county's resolution, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council? Any questions, comments from the audience?
Mr. Mayor, I, actually, point of clarification, Melinda, mostly, I know you've probably done this at the, at the commission meeting, but, and I apologize, I was not able to be at that, at that meeting. As a past commissioner and now city council member, it was very, very frustrating that I could not be there. I happened to be at the hospital, and God bless the people I took care of at that time, because I was really trying to, I was really trying to get out so I could get over there. But, but, and I want to extend my gratitude for the commission for passing, passing this resolution, because it's very, very, very important in the process of getting this whole project done. Everything hinges on, on everything else. But there was a bit of misinformation, I think, that was thrown out there that I heard, and I'd like to give you an opportunity to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
There was a couple of folks that were mentioning that, that by signing this agreement, that the commission would be on the hook for a significant amount of money with that. And of course, this council and the city manager and yourself have not supported that, and I'd like to give you the opportunity to make sure that that, that is a, that is indeed misinformation.
Yes, sir, it is. The resolution in no way reflects that, refers to that in any way as point one. Point two, the LIC program, the Local Interchange Connector Program, requires that the contracting jurisdiction, municipality or county, deposit their funds into a bank account prior to approval of construction, et cetera. Therefore, if the county didn't deposit funds, they wouldn't be responsible. The matching funds have to be placed upfront.
Correct, okay.
So there, there is no requirement, it's not necessarily a grant that gives you the money and then you go spend it. It's reimbursable and/or, you know, so to speak, and you have to put, we have to put our portion into a bank account before TDOT moves to their portion. So that virtually would be impossible for the county to be on the hook.
So which we are on schedule to do.
Yes, sir.
And so that the misinformation of hook is basically misinformation.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Scare tactics, et cetera, okay, thank you. Thank you for your clarification of that, because I just, being on that body for such a long time, it's very, it's very, misinformation gets blown out of proportion very easily, and it's, I'd like to stick to the facts, and I appreciate, and this is very confusing, there's, all these things are connected to each other, and it can become very confusing at any point in time, so I appreciate your, taking your time to clarify that.
Well, and with that said, I would also like to, again, thank the council and the county commission for, for their partnership. A project like this does not happen without partnership and without full transparency, disclosure. I'd like to encourage anyone who has questions to seek out the facts. It is, it is an evolving project, any road project is, and we want to make sure that we do our due diligence as we go forward. In the future, council will be bringing before you a second resolution at the time that the LIC contract is ready to be signed. We will pass a resolution that will go with that contract that basically says, again, we will be responsible. We will also be bringing before you selection on an engineering design firm. So the, so the project hasn't even been designed, we are in very preliminary stages. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mel, follow your work.
Well, and everybody just needs to keep their eye on the goal, and that's get that business park up and running.
Yes.
And it's a joint venture between the county and the city, and it will be a boon to... to this entire area, and that's where all this is headed for.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Thanks for the questions, Vice Mayor Epps, because the underlying thing, I believe, as we move forward with this entire project is, first, let me vote on this so we can move on, so she doesn't have to stand here while I say my name. Any other questions, real quick? All right. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. As we move forward with this project, the biggest thing that I want to convey to everyone is openness and communication. Everything is above board. We're looking for input. This is a, this is a community effort, city, county, and citizens. And so I'm glad Vice Mayor Epps asked that question, because that's what we're striving for. And, you know, one of the things that we all ran on and promised we would try to do is bring jobs to this area, and this is, this is the biggest component that could bring jobs to this area in a very long, in my lifetime, I imagine. So this is something that we want to make sure is done correctly and done with county involvement, done with citizens' input. So with all that being said, of course, we are having a meeting next Thursday night, April 26th, at the Leslie Town Center from 5:00 to 7:00, to discuss every bit of this road. Where it's going, where it can go, where we can possibly move it over a little bit if we need to, where the access points would be, and when we say access points, that doesn't necessarily mean access roads are going there right now or anytime soon. It's just where we have to identify potential access points. So all this stuff will be discussed next Thursday. Everyone is invited. We're gonna have a lot of staff there, as many of the council that can be there will be there, and we're gonna try to answer any questions and, and work with the citizens to do what we can to make this, to make this good for everybody. So, anyway, wanted to get that out, get that out there. So this is the part of the meeting where we hear from citizens and our delegations. If we have anyone that would like to get up and speak, feel free. Just come forward, announce your name, and try to hold it three minutes if you can. Anyone? All right. Anything from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to point out this 30th anniversary of the celebration of the Iris, Iris Chapter Embroiderers Guild of America. There's this gorgeous panel, there's five panels of America the Beautiful, and I know you can't really see it, but it's, it's embroidery, and it's being displayed at the Cumberland Arts Society Gallery in Cookville, April 1st through the 27th, 186 Walnut Avenue. And it's the only time it's been displayed in Tennessee, and some of the people in our guild that worked on this worked on one of the panels. And the panel is, it has, the National Tapestry has five panels. Each one is two feet wide by four feet high. So it's quite a large thing, and it's quite an honor that it came to Cookville, Tennessee. It's been on tour since 2008. It was first presented in Atlanta, and now it's in Cookville, Tennessee until April the 27th at the Cumberland Arts Society Gallery. And just wanted to give a shout-out for that, and I know you can't really see the picture, but it is quite beautiful.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
I have a guest with me tonight. My sister-in-law, she's more like a sister to me, and Mary Kay Heard, she's here from Kansas. I took her on a tour of the business park today in the hospital, and...
I know everything you already talked about. Tell me all about it.
So we, she's enjoyed, they, our hometown is about to break ground on a new hospital. And so we went over, and she got to see the Brad Sales sculptures over there and, and the legacy wall and different things like that, so she got some ideas to take back with her. So we enjoyed having her here.
Is it Ottawa?
Well, Iowa.
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 I've driven through Iowa, Iowa, Kansas many, many times.[1775.16]